So thanks very much, Lord Mayor and members. I just intend to go quickly through the city centre transport plan, the main items in it, the some details on the consultation, what the next steps are and so on. And I'm also joined by Deirdre Scully from Planning Department because obviously this plan is an output or an objective from the development plan, so she'll talk a little bit about that. So just to start off with, this is the second city centre transport study. The first one was in 2016, really covered the last development plan, 2016 to 22. Main features of this particular one was obviously the focus was on Lewis Cross City, changes in the city from Dawson Street being, you know, fully, fully open to traffic, Lower Graffin Street, et cetera, et cetera, to situations where they're particularly the bottom of Dawson Street, Lower Graffin Street and so on are public transport only, bus, taxi and Lewis. And all of this, the various different changes that happened were to allow us to introduce the Lewis Cross City, which was a real achievement at the time to actually put a true, what was still quite a congested city at the time, and actually make space, reduce traffic numbers, reduce traffic volume so it could actually work. As some of the consequences of it, Suffolk Street, which used to have large numbers of buses in it, became in effect traffic free, we had the Broadstone Plaza, which came into being, and there's a long list of changes that were made in order to actually implement the Lewis Cross City. And I suppose the reason we put that in context is it just, we're now at the cusp, I suppose, of a number of different transportation plans, everything from active travel to public transport plans, and that is really where a lot of their thinking, which is expressed in the city centre plan, comes from. So I might just hand over to Deirdre at this particular point.
Thanks. I suppose it's just to emphasise that the transport study is very much, I suppose, integrated with the city development plan and that the aims and the ambitions of the city development plan is expressed by yourselves and brought through that process, required to be implemented, and this is a key part of that implementation process. We're heading very close now to the two-year review of all the objectives within the development plan, and this is a key part of delivering Chapter Eight, which sets out a range of very ambitious targets as regards the standards. I was, I suppose, in preparation for today's meeting, I had a quick look back at the CE reports, as you do, of the debates for the development plan, and I was reminded of the 2021 CE report, which is 316 for those who want to look it up, where you, as a chamber, voted to raise the bar and to increase the standards, the targets that the city development plan contains as regards delivering sustainable mobility and improving the quality of the city centre as regards sustainable modes of travel. And so there's been a bar set that's quite high and ambitious, but rightly so, because it is such a strong relationship with all the other objectives as regards improving the quality of the city centre and meeting the climate change targets that are outlined in the development plan. And this would be seen as one of the key parts of delivering that climate change strategy as a cross-cutting theme within the development plan. And I suppose the delivery of this is part of our delivery of the Climate Action Plan and meeting that, and that ambition is set out in the development plan itself. So it's just, I suppose, to emphasise that the interlinking elements of this with a range of different strategies within the development plan and how important that we deliver on the objectives that were passed as part of that key process of making the plan.
Thanks, Deirdre. So as part of that, there are specific mode share targets were set out to be achieved by 2028, and I suppose what you're looking at there is what, you know, was 2019 was what it was based on. And really, the key things that stand out, you know, very much an emphasis on cycling and walking, increasing those numbers, increasing public transport, but quite dramatically reducing the number of cars, taxis and goods vehicles in the city, and it really means for general traffic, really, it's about a 40% decrease is what you actually set us as a target to achieve by the 2028. There's quite a few different policies and objectives, but again, it's this modal shift and comeback growth. So again, the emphasis on the transport modes, the active mobility and public transport. So these are all, again, taken from the development plan. And I suppose when we started to look at this, it was, it was how do we reduce car numbers by the amounts that that's set? And while mode share is a percentage, when we translated that back into what it would mean, it's this figure of really about 22,000 vehicles that come across the canal cordon every morning, you know, would have to be removed to actually meet these targets. So we started to look at it with the NTA, particularly through the modelling work that they did, which showed particularly in the core city centre area, the amount of true traffic that comes through this area that doesn't have a destination within it. So the overall mode share is based on the red line, which is the canal cordon, that's what you've set us. And I suppose with any transport, when we're trying to think of how we increase the public transport, it's provide better, more frequent services, less congestion. When we're looking at how to reduce some of the general traffic, it's, you know, is there traffic that doesn't need to be here? And that's very much the focus, is really on the true traffic. We're not suggesting for a second that the city centre is cut off, that there's no access, that nobody can cross from north to south, all the bridges are still open. You know, it's just some specific targeted measures to really reduce the amount of true traffic and so encourage people to, you know, diverge away, so change mode, change the way they drive if they're still in their private car, and that's really the emphasis. We also have, you know, that we have as part of the development plan, one of the reference plans really is the NTA's Transport Strategy for the Greater Dublin Area. So again, this ties in, linking the development plan to that greater transport area strategy. And again, this really is accommodating significant numbers of people travelling by public transport, travelling by active travel into the city, so cycling, walking, rail, bus, allowing the new projects such as the metro, such as the Bus Connects Corridor, such as the active travel routes that are trying to be rolled out at the moment to be created. If we look at the provisional cordon count figures from last year, which kind of give us an idea of where we are in relation to the targets you've set, so remember, we're looking 23, we're in 24, your targets you set us were for 28. So first of all, the good news is really the number of bus passengers is now coming into the city is now the highest ever recorded. So unlike a lot of European cities that still have a lag in public transport, particularly bus passenger numbers after Covid, we've actually increased the numbers, so it's up 9% in '22, and it's now 3% over the high peak before, which was the 2019 figures. The Lewis numbers have increased 26% since last year and are now equal to the 2019 figures. Rail has recovered strongly, is up 30% on 2022 figures and is now 90% of where it was in 2019. The number of people coming in by car has declined by 2% since 2022, and the numbers are now at 83% of where they were in 2019. Walking and cycling figures increased by 3% on 2022 and are now at 72% of those 2019 figures. And the total public transport figures across all modes are now the second highest ever with almost 60% mode share. So, and the car figures are now about 25% of mode share, but remember, in the development plan, it talked about taxis and goods as well, so really, this is about 28, 29%. And the total number of people crossing the canal cordon is now 90% of 2019. So I suppose what we're looking at is the, is over a number of years, and you'll see it in this graph, the recovery of the city, you know, with the total person trips coming into the city now at 193,000, sorry, now at 193,000. So very much the recovery from 2020, where we didn't have the public transport figures, 2021, '22, '23. So the recovery, though, has, the car numbers are static, or have actually reduced slightly.
Brendan, can I just ask that you might read out those figures in the right-hand column?
Sure.
Because for anybody watching online, et cetera, the speakers are covering them.
Okay, they might be able to just get rid of the, of that. Yeah, so if they can minimise it, it probably is simpler, but what we're looking at is that the total person trips, total person trips, 193,000. The bus is now at 66, nearly 67,000, rail is about 33,000, Lewis is almost up at 14,000. So all public transport figures, thanks, is 114,000. So if we look back to, say, 2012, all public transport was 86,000, car numbers were 68,000. We're now at 114,000 public transport, car numbers at 48. So we've seen, while, you know, we've got more people coming in than we had in 2012, they're now coming increasingly, the dominant mode is public transport. So we've got a number of different public transport projects. We've got the network redesign, the Bus Connects Corridors, four of those have now been approved and will start entering the design and implementation stage. We've got DAR+ project, the various different ones. We've got MetroLink, which obviously the hearing is finished with maybe a little bit more to go. And then we've obviously got the Active Travel Network, which is, which is ongoing with numerous projects across the city and planning. And our particular issue here, and really the whole city transport plan, is to try and knit these different networks together. So we have a Bus Connects network, we have a cycle network, we have a rail network. So how do they all come together? How do we make sure that we can roll out the various different elements? Because sometimes they're competing with each other, sometimes they don't sit very well together. And again, it's this kind of integrated plan for the next number of years, up to 2028, is what we've, what we've put together. So the aims of the revised traffic arrangements, and I suppose the reason I touch back to the 2016, in order for us to have the Lewis Cross City, which has been a real benefit to the city, we had to make a load of changes in order to accommodate that. As we start to see the next upgrade with the Bus Connects Corridors coming through, the metro, the various sort of changes coming through, again, there's changes, there's changes that need to be made. So we need to allow the public transport network to grow. It's carrying 60% of people, you know, that figure can grow. We know that the buses have problems in congestion, we know there's problems with driver numbers, so the actual smoothing out of the network, the actual creating those kind of routes through the city centre and across without getting delayed in the city centre are vital to actually growing that. We also have the multi-modal interchange, the fact that we have the 90-minute fare now means that there's a no penalty for changing from bus to Lewis to DART, and that's to be encouraged, but we need to provision the streets for that, we need to have the space for the stops in the waiting area. And part of the bus network redesign that we're involved with the NTA at the moment, the stops, putting in stops in the various different locations that are needed is a real issue. So we also have to allow that the metro will go ahead, you know, that's the hope of everybody, I think. We need to allow for that construction, we need to make space to allow the growth of the cycling network, the cycle, our cycling programme office have real challenges in trying to make some space for this. We also need to make the walking network more connected and pleasant. So in the task that you set us was, was to prioritise active travel and public transport, but also to provide this high-quality public realm. So it wasn't enough to do that, it was also to look for the public realm opportunities. We're also clear that we have to ensure accessibility to and continued ability of businesses to operate. There's no point in creating a vision here that in actual fact means that we empty out the city. So, you know, around 60% of the traffic in the core city centre is true traffic. This is what's constricting us, what's delaying us. So what we want to do is we want to implement a number of changes in 2024 and 2025, which are real just traffic management changes. In other words, they're, you know, you can't drive this way anymore, rather than any great public realm works or whatever. But the idea behind it is to create this low-traffic environment in the city centre. And as we start to create that low-traffic environment, as we start to see the reduction, because as long as there's a route through the city centre, people will continue to use it, as the route changes, people's mind map of how they get around the city will start to change. Again, touching back to the development plan, it's policy of it to move to a low-traffic environmental, environment generally, and also to increase the amount of traffic-free spaces. Again, the emphasis on new, high-quality public realm areas, and again, you know, enhance the access to them by public transport, walking and cycling. So these are all what you've set us as tasks. So very quickly running through it, it's, it's to, I suppose, within the city's core area, over the last number of years, there's been a lot of work on the north-south corridor. So the O'Connell Street scheme, for example, College Green, et cetera, have all meant that that's no longer the big dominant movement that it used to be. So for example, O'Connell Street, before it was upgraded, had about 1,600 vehicles an hour just heading over the bridge, it now has about 150. So it's been quite a dramatic turnaround in that. So we're proposing on the north and south keys to put in Bus Gates, Bachelor's Walk and an Aston Key. And the idea behind this is to reduce these as being true routes, so to take away that, what is really a watery dual carriageway with big road on either side of the keys, and to make it into a bus gate. So it'll be public transport, taxis, cyclists and pedestrians only. And again, part of the reason for this is to create space. So our active travel colleagues are working on the Liffey cycle route at the moment and O'Connell Bridge, they've already taken some space there with some fairly knock-on consequences to traffic. So we know that if we don't make some space, if we don't reduce some of the traffic here, finding space, finding additional space for those projects will be very difficult. Western Row, again, left turn, public transport only. Western Row, under Bus Connects network redesign, becomes quite a major bus route in both directions. We want to ensure that as we progress through this, that those public transport, public transport can continue to function. We're still allowing full access into Western Row, but it's just that there'll be a section of Pier Street made two-way from Western Row to Sandwick Street. And part of the reason for having to do this, high-sided vehicles, it's the only bridge that high-sided vehicles can pass under in that whole area. As we move to implement those, so the first ones, the Bachelor's Walk, Aston Key and Western Row, they're the first three that we propose to implement. As we start to see changes in traffic levels, we're hoping to be able to do work, Pier Street, Tower Street, Place like Barsford Place, Customs House, College Green, and we'll touch on a few of those. But it's really about trying to reduce the volume of traffic in the city centre. It's not about closing off complete access or anything like that, that people had feared or were saying it was about. It really is about trying to introduce this low-traffic environment that's been asked of us. So there's a number of areas, obviously we have the College Green, Dames Street, Plaza, you know, so again, this gives the opportunity for us to be able to work on that. Parliament Street, we had a lot of requests for Parliament Street to actually continue Capel Street across, and this, once the network changes, Bus Connects network changes, remove the bus service here is something that we'll be able to do, and that will provide a good north-south link for cycling. The Keys, Bachelor's Walk, by being able to take out the general traffic lane in that area, we can prioritise public transport, we can also create space for both pedestrians and cyclists, and reduce the traffic in that area. And remember, Bachelor's Walk is the busiest pedestrian crossing in the entire country, so this is a considerable win for the pedestrian in the area. Again, the south keys is similar, we want to prioritise the public transport at this point, and that will in turn reduce the amount of traffic in that area. We have opportunities in Pier Street as well. Pier Street has long been an area that people have complained to us about, you know, the fact that it's four lanes, that it's not green, et cetera, et cetera. The changes here, by removing the traffic that currently uses Pier Street to go down Tower Street, to turn left to go along the Keys and all the way down the Keys, that traffic will no longer be able to do that. And so the intention is that that traffic will divert away from this area, allowing us to introduce some of these measures. And part of the reason that Tower Street and Pier Street is so important is, obviously, you know, we have the DART plus upgrade, which will increase the number of passengers coming in here, but we also have the site of a metro station. So this area here, with the College Square development, et cetera, et cetera, becomes a major, major, major area for pedestrian activity. Tower Street itself, quite, quite, you know, wide, again, no cycling provision, the opportunity is there to try and provide some additional greening there. Some of the other options that we've looked at, Barsford Place, intervention at Customs House, Gardiner Street, again, if we are reducing the amount of traffic in the north and south keys, coming down Pier Street, we can actually start to look at Gardiner Street as being something other than the four-lane road it is at the moment. We also have opportunities at Lincoln Place outside the National Gallery, and, you know, we've places like Christchurch and so on. So the key outcomes of it is reduction of up to 60% in car traffic, more frequent and reliable public transport, reduced emissions because there's a reduction of about 34% in kilometres travelled by private car in the city centre, which is massive in terms of air pollution. We also have traffic noise reduced, we've improved cross-city pedestrian connectivity. So turning to consultation, the draft plan was presented to the City Council, SPC, September 13th. Period of public consultation took place over 11 weeks from September to December. All the DPOs were informed in advance of the proposed publication, and then once it was published, they were also informed, and they were informed how they could actually make a submission and where the various different printed copies, et cetera, were available. We also provided all the documentation in accessible format. The number of submissions we got in total was about 3,500, most through the online portal, but we also got, we had set up both in ourselves and the NTA, where people could come in, review the documents and leave their comments. We also accepted it by email, by post, there was no requirement to fill out the survey, you could make a submission either through the online or through email, whatever, there's no requirement to fill out the actual submission or the questionnaire. And to put it in context, Dublin City Development Plan received, I think, about 4,000. The Dublin Climate Action Plan received 88. So in terms of the actual numbers that we received, it was very widespread, and in the consultation report, we talked about the various different media aspects of it. In general, practically all the actual people who filled out the questionnaire, they were all quite positive about what was, what was proposed. The majority of people who submitted through the consultation were using public transport, walking and cycling. But if you look at the numbers, car was about 15%, public transport is roughly about almost 40%. So taking it back to the canal cordon figures, you'll see public transport users at about 60% of everybody coming across, so the figures kind of reflect that. The interesting, some of the interesting stats with people who identify themselves as private car users were actually still in favour of reducing true traffic. We know public transport were overwhelmingly in favour, but it's interesting that private car users were as well. So I suppose, again, we looked at the various different age groups because, you know, there's a view that maybe this is for younger, more mobile people or whatever, but as we approached the 70-plus bracket, we still had a large element of support for this proposal. We had presented two options, Customs House Key, Liberty Place. A lot of people wanted Liberty Place, but a lot of people also wanted Customs House Key, so we've decided the simplest thing to do is to actually start to advance some ideas on both of those and see what's practical. I suppose when we went through the consultation and we provided a full consultation report, but these are the kind of things that they liked, overall vision set out, allowing public transport to move better through the city, making the city a healthier place to be in. Then I suppose the main fears, the main concerns related to those who had no, saw themselves as having no alternative to cars, disability access issues to disabled parking spaces, those outside the city where there's less public transport options. And there's a concern from some that there be no cars permitted in the city and that the measures have been brought in before major public transport enhancements are in place. So I suppose for clarity, cars and delivery vehicles are still allowed to access the city centre. The aim of this plan is to reduce true traffic, not cut off access. One of the interesting ones we got, we got from the HSC Dublin and the HSC South East, we also got from the Health Alliance, this is the Irish Cancer Society, Irish Doctors for the Environment, College of General Practitioners, Chartered Physiotherapies, Heart Foundation, Asthma Society of Ireland, Royal College of Physicians, Surgeons, UCD, Global Health Network, Association of Health Promotion Ireland, Irish Medical Organisation, so a representation of all the medical professionals. And they fully endorsed this plan, saying that it will deliver a multitude of physical health, mental health, environmental and economic benefits for the local community. Disability groups, as I say, the DPOs were informed in advance, they were then informed once the plan had been published, and also in addition to those, the Department of Transport Accessibility Section was informed, access officers of all the public transport users were informed, and they in turn have their own disability user groups, both in Dublin and nationwide, they were all informed about the consultation. The disability stakeholder groups were also informed, and the Disability Participation and Consultation Network was also informed. A full equality impact assessment report was separately undertaken by Jacobs on the plan to determine any impacts of the plan against the nine protected characteristic groups, which include disability. A full strategic environmental assessment was also undertaken, including impact on humans, and the plan was presented to the NTA Transport Users Accessibility Group. Also, the PPN has two members on the Transportation SBC, where the plan has been presented and discussed on two occasions. The Voice for Vision impairment, they made a submission, and I suppose they made a number of different points, but one of the points they made was, anyone in the Greater Dublin area will be able to travel to anywhere else in the Greater Dublin area in under an hour via all modes of transport, including by blue badge vehicles for those who cannot use public transport. So I suppose that the issue is we don't have blue badge, what we have is a disabled parking permit, which provides free parking in a disability parking location, in a disabled parking location. In actual fact, we also provide it free in normal parking locations, if you have a disabled badge, you can park both in the disabled and also in the, in the non-disabled, if the disabled is full. It's done under the regulation, standard regulation, section 35 of the Roads Act. It provides no derogation to any traffic regulations such as turnbans, pedestrian street, bus lanes and Lewis-only streets. And as such, the request to allow disabled permit parking holders access to every street in Dublin is not feasible or legal under the current traffic regulations. And just bear in mind, bus gates, bus-only streets, pedestrian streets such as Graffin Street and Henry Street, and Lewis-only streets such as Lower Graffin Street, sections of Abbey Street, are all traffic management measures which have been in place for a considerable period of time. Board Planola has granted permission for Bus Connects corridors so far, of which new bus gates are a feature. DCC will work, though, we will work with the DPO organisations and individuals with disability, and we got a number of submissions from them, some of them are easily dealt with, some of them we have to come back to, to mitigate any impact which may occur due to the city centre transport plan. But what we're talking about, the measures that both Aston Key and Bachelor's Walk have a very small impact area, there are alternative routings around each of those locations. We also got consultation or submissions from the various different business groups, a lot of them welcomed the vision of the plan but want a consultation, that's ongoing. A number of submissions, Grafton Car Park, the Dublin City Centre Trade Association objected to the plan, but we're committed to working with businesses to ensure the changes are well communicated. And we've had multiple discussions, we've met with the Lord Mayor's Forum, we've met with Dublin Chamber, we've met with IBEC, we've met several times at Dublin town, we're planning a workshop with the various different business organisations in the next couple of weeks, so we'll keep up this level of engagement with them. The next steps, really, we're going to continue that discussion, we're going to start a target engagement process with business and residents in the immediate area of the changes. As I say, the changes are a very small location. We will be putting in place a comprehensive publicity campaign and aspects of this, one of the items that comes up regularly is how do people get to the three arena, how do you inform people who are going to Crow Park? So one of the things we're going to do is through the Ticketmaster app, we're going to provide information for people who are looking at tickets for events in Dublin. Maps showing how to access to hospitals from the four quadrants will be in preparation, and, you know, we'll show, for example, if you're coming along the north keys at the moment, say, to the Rotunda, you can simply turn up Jervis Street and continue. If you're coming on the south keys, the turn you use at the moment, the right turn on O'Connell Bridge is still there, so there's no change. So we intend to produce those for the north side and south side, different hospitals to, I suppose, alleviate people's fears that they'll be difficult to getting to them. As I say, the first changes are scheduled to be implemented in early August 2024, at Bachelor's Walk, Aston Key and the Western Row changes. Note, other changes such as the permanent plaza at College Green, Dames Street, will require either Part Eight or Part Ten applications aboard Planola, and we'll go through the appropriate statutory processes and consultation. So a lot of what we're talking about in terms of the public realm proposals, they will come back to either as Part Eight or for approval to go to as a, as permission to board Planola. And finally, we just leave you with the Graffin Street reminder of what's changed and Henry Street, so myself and Deirdre are happy to take questions.
Good morning. I have a long list of speakers already indicating that they wish to come in. We'll kick off, councillor Manix Flynn.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, thank you very much for the report, sorry. Sorry, thank you very much for the report. Just in relation to, I mean, the Dublin City Council Development Plan is inscribed by a process whereby you have to apply for planning permission, and there's a series of legislations that you have to go through in order to get anything done. So rolling in the Dublin City Council Development Plan to push across your Dublin City Council Transport Plan is a little bit rich. The issue here is very simple, is that this is for noting, this has been driven by the executive, this doesn't have any input from us and is not a reserved decision by us. The chances are here is that this will end up in a court case, in a judicial review. And most of the people that I spoke to... And most of the people that I spoke to, including businesses, did not agree with this particular process, including residents. There are documents that are missing from the process, two documents that you handed to the residents in Pier Square, which weren't part of the public consultation. You didn't do any modelling in relation to the impact, the negative impact that this will have on the economy of the city. So there's huge problems here in terms of the way it rolls out. Who wouldn't want a better city? Who wouldn't want a clearer city? Who wouldn't want a city that works? But this is all ad hoc. Silomis slicing is what's going on here. And as I said, you haven't even addressed the core issues. For instance, in relation to the inner city communities who all rely on the car, they weren't even informed about this particular process. This is an executive decision that will end up in the courts. And again, what will happen will be it'll end up in the same place as the Strand Road did.
Councillor Doherty-Doolan.
Gormaghat. First of all, welcome to the presentation and absolutely the spirit of the presentation, making our streets and our city a safer place for everybody. Cyclists, people who are walking through the city and people who want to access our city. I think we need to welcome all progressive steps to achieve that. And I think this plan is a cornerstone for that. But one key, I suppose, concern I have is an email I received today. I'm sure everybody received it from the Voice of Vision Impaired. And I just want to share it with your manager, you may well have received it yourself, around not allowing so-called blue badge vehicles to use the roads around Bachelors Walk, Aston Key, Western Row and Pier Street. And was this organisation and other disability organisations engaged with and consulted with, rather than having information exchange? And will the current plan as we see it prevent those people in blue badge vehicles from using the roads? And how can we ensure that everybody, including those who use these vehicles, have access to the city centre? How can we ensure that happens? But I don't want to see this in any way as an attempt to stop or curtail the progress of making Dublin city more accessible and safer for everyone. I think it's very laudable. And we certainly hope all parties will support implementation as long into the future.
Gormaghat Doherty. Councillor Hazelton-Artun.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, it's very detailed. I know this is going to be a long-term progress plan, but one point I would like to make about this and the next two reports that are coming before the council is, we may all accept that we need to get into the town, city centre on public transport, whether that's by bus or Lewis or cycling. But if, there's one thing that I can raise, which is that you might be able to pass on because I'm not having any look at all, is if you're meeting Bus Connects, ask them to actually publicly engage with people. If you do want to get into the city in a timely manner, it doesn't mean you have to run shot through communities by going through absolutely every piece of heritage or every green tree that they have. And I'm sick of actually being put into a situation where I think Bus Connects thinks I'm a rep for them and that I have to go and explain their plans. And I'm always telling them that I'm actually a rep for the community, not for Bus Connects. And it doesn't seem to go down well. But I'm trying to figure out who exactly is meant to be out in Colson with the people. We did a large presentation out in Ballyferman over the weekend because, again, people have seen signs going up the side of the road. They're concerned about the trees that they have planted over decades going to be removed with absolutely no consultation. And their response to me was, well, sure, when it comes closer to, we will go out and see them. Because can't be coming into areas like that. And then it's going to affect all of the larger transport plans that we're going to have in the area. We're not against public transport, but we're against the lack of consultation that they have. So if somebody will listen to you, because they're not listening to me, thanks.
Gormaghat, councillor Donacuni.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I suppose one of the things maybe for the next council really is perhaps, you know, to have the Voice of Vision Impaired, to have a representative on our transport SPC, you know? Because I think when we have that dialogue and we have that communication, it will be good, you know, to see in the future as these plans go forward. I do believe it'll be, you know, make the city a much more livable city for everybody. And I do feel like a lot of us put a lot of work in that development plan. And this was one of the objectives of it. It'll make for a city, it'll make a space not only for more people to be able to walk, wheel and cycle and take public transport, you know, more effectively. It'll move more people into the city. And it'll have more people in the city, you know, stay in the city, you know, shop in the city, you know, socialise in the city. Because at the moment, we've got a beautiful city, but it's clogged with traffic and noise and pollution. And you can't hear yourself speak, let alone stop and have a chat with somebody on the street. And, you know, they're the sort of the tangible benefits. It'd be like, you know, it'll just, it'll really, really be very transformative, I believe, for our city, you know, onto the future and for future generations. And it was, you know, the children that we brought in here in the council chamber before, from schools, you know, in the city.
Councillor Rachel Button.
They advocated for this. And the young people, let's listen to the young people's voices, because it's their future, we need to think of them.
Can we mute the mic please? Councillor Rachel Button. Okay, we'll move on. Councillor Damon O'Farrell.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. The Lord Mayor has agreed today that he'd let me pass, put down an emergency motion on this, on the report. And before I read out what the emergency motion is, so DPROs, disabled person rights organisations, these are disabled persons advocating for themselves. They're not third-party groups advocating for people with disabilities. Many of those are service providers themselves. No, these are disabled persons advocating for themselves. There are six of them registered at Dublin City Council and many of them include neurodivergent. So the motion is that this council agrees the implementation of the draft Dublin City Development Plan be deferred until such time as there had been disability proofing in compliance with DCC's legally binding obligations under the Convention of Rights for People with Disabilities. Furthermore, the body and conclusion of the report being noted here tonight shows no evidence of DCC's awareness of their obligations under the UN CRPD. There is no reference to the legal standing of DPROs. To prevent any possible discrimination of this non-compliance, this council takes the opportunity tonight to defer the matter. So Voice of Vision Impairment, they wrote into the submission and they made, what they did particularly was, they are DPRO and they made a submission on the seventh of September. And they let DCC know of their concerns, that the project was non-CRPD compliant. So the project, that report, this public consultation did not, was not compliant with the rights of people with disability under the UN Convention. And they cited Articles Four of the CRPD consultation include distinguishing DPROs from all other civil society organisations in the consultation. Now, this is in the article. Prioritisation of the views and opinions of DPROs over all others in relation to disability. Having DPROs only spaces for active consultation. That means bilateral meetings, they have to come in and meet them.
Gormaghat Damon. And I gave you an extra. No, I gave you an extra thirty seconds because you were moving the motion, which standing orders gives you two minutes. We go to the next person, Sophie.
Thank you. I welcome the plan. I am from Nantes in France and that's one of the good model for public transport and removing cars from the city. But as I said first, this, a plan to remove cars from the city, as I say, I welcome it. But it needs to come in parallel of bringing more public transport and not less public transport. So the likes of neighbourhoods like Inchicore and Bluebell will be losing three buses. It'll be replaced by one bus per hour. So residents, and while we talk about making Dublin City Council the world-class of active travel activity, so that goes against that. What we want is to keep number thirteen and for the number thirteen bus to go through Thomas Street. Because we're removing all the underlies and everybody else from Bluebell and Inchicore to access Thomas Street. And this is a vital shopping area, probably more than city centre. So I welcome the plan, but it needs to come in parallel of public transport, otherwise it will not work. So we want it to work hundred percent. So what we're asking is number thirteen to remain and to go through Thomas Street. Thank you.
Gormaghat, Sophie. Councillor Clareburn.
Thank you very much and thanks for the presentation, Brendan and Deirdre, I really appreciate it. And it was really good to outline and remind everyone in this chamber that we all committed to this in our city development plan and our city and our national climate action plans to reduce transport emissions. And we do this by reducing private vehicles passing through the city. We've been rerouting this traffic around the city for years. I mean, you'll all remember when you used to be able, there was two-way around Stevens Green. That's been changed for about fifteen years. I'd love if somebody could actually point to any particular disaster that these changes in the past have caused. I don't envision any disasters as a result of these changes. In fact, I think ultimately the plan will bring nothing but positive changes, making it calmer, safer, healthier for those living in the city now and in the future as well. It'll allow more road space for the public transport that everyone is calling for and for the key pedestrian projects that we all signed up for in the city development plan like College Green, Parliament Street and South William Street. They're just the ones on my side of the river, by the way. What is important though, and Brendan, I do appreciate that you have met with the residents of Pier Street and Pier Square a number of times at this stage. Monitoring and measurement will be key to the success of this. And I welcome the commitments that you've made to pay particular attention to that area. And I hope that those conversations can keep going. But, you know, this change is, it's a good thing, but ultimately it has to happen if we're really serious about reaching our climate targets from transport emissions. Thank you.
Gormaghat, manager.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Just going back, I know some of the councillors are raising issues to do with Bus Connects, councillor Denartun and councillor Nicola. So on those, we can take those comments back to the NTA. The issue councillor Doon regarding the VVI, so what I was saying in the presentation is we don't actually have a blue badge vehicle. What we have is we have a parking app, a disabled parking badge. And that allows people to park. It doesn't, under the road traffic regulations, give them any other rights other than that. So we're kind of bound by the national legislation. So in, when we create public transport only, or indeed when we create, you know, pedestrian streets, or when we create, as we did for Lewis, Lewis public transport streets such as Lower Graffin Street, there isn't a mechanism for us to allow people who hold disabled parking badges to use that. However, what we're saying is that that's only really relevant to only two short sections on Bachelors Walk and a portion of Aston Key. Western Row is still fully accessible. All of Pier Street is still fully accessible. There's no changes in either of those. Tara Street is fully accessible. All the bridges are fully accessible, et cetera. Where there's any particular changes, and as I say, it's only a short section, and the short section is as short a section as we can put in in order to change some behaviour. You know, you'd still be able to turn left into West Morning Street, for example. You'll still be able to access to Lear Street. You'll still be able to access Fleet Street. So we've committed to saying, you know, as I say, people in the consultation have asked us for a number of, a number of questions about how access can be maintained to various different areas. We worked through those particular issues and make sure there are. We've also committed to making sure that the actual disabled parking spaces, that the numbers remain the same and that we try, if we can, to actually increase those numbers. The councillor Cooney, the president of VVI and Transport SPC, as I understand, they were on the Environment SPC and the PPN had other members on the transport, but the new composition of the SPC would quite welcome that. I think the residents of Pier Square, yes, we've met with them a number of times. They asked us specific questions about modelling in the area, which was more of a local model, which is what we provided them. We've said we'll meet them again, we're going to set up meetings with our active travel colleagues, with our noise quality people. So it's the same with any residence group who asks to meet us, we'll meet them. And the same with any of the disability groups as well.
Thank you. Colleagues, before I go into the next round of questions, can I suggest maybe that we extend the meeting to get through the business of the meeting? I'm very conscious that it's eight minutes to nine, like we've got thirty-eight minutes. This is big. I want to give this the time that it deserves for people to have a debate. And then I'll also, if you agree with me, I'd also like to make this as part of extending the meeting and completing the business without being rushed, that items fourteen, fifteen and seventeen, with the agreement of the managers, that we might be able to email any questions that we might have and they'll come back with detailed responses to all councillors. And that might help us with debate. I'm conscious we've also committed to a forty-minute debate as part of topical issues also. Yes, councillor Pidgen.
I totally agree with the email idea and if we have to extend grand, but I think we'd all like to speak on the Gaza thing, which is of huge importance. And all the other items on the agenda are of less importance, but they're also issues that we directly control as a council. So maybe I could, if people would be amenable, that maybe we could consider discussing Gaza at perhaps the final meeting and bear that in when we're making the agenda or not discuss it now. My just concern is we're not going to discuss core topics that the city council controls. Sorry, I'd like to speak without interruption, please. That I think the council essentially has say and control over and we should do that job as well, you know?
So can I, yeah, Gomalech Gal. So look, the first proposal is to extend the meeting to complete the business and then we can alter the business if that's okay. So can I put it that we complete the business of the council this evening, that we'll extend the time of the meeting?
Agreed.
Gomalech Gal, Dermot.
Could I just quickly ask about the public transport system, please? About the school bus system.
Please, we have somebody speaking, Dermot.
Sorry, I just want to get a time here because technically the agenda is all the motions. So we need to just be clear what we're extending it to.
Well, it's actually the business of the meeting. So what I'd be saying is if we can put a time limit of forty-five minutes on it maybe, that we complete until quarter past ten. Because considering the amount of speakers that we have here, like, and if we say quarter past ten, and as I said, if we can move through the agenda and if we can facilitate email questions and things like that. So the first thing is, is it agreed that we extend for forty-five minutes?
Agreed.
Gormaghat. And then the second, we agreed a topical debate. Is it agreed that we go ahead?
Agreed.
A few people, I suspect, who don't agree with this, but at the same time understandably want to give this issue the importance it deserves. I'd suggest that rather than doing a rush debate at quarter past ten when everyone is done, that we make a bit of time for this in the next meeting and focus on the core business today. I'm very happy to talk about the topic.
So what I might suggest, if, so we've agreed to extend the meeting, okay? Can we conclude this debate then? And I'll come back with a resolution of what we're going to put in terms of the topical debate to council. And we can all make the decision collectively. Is that okay?
Yeah, Lord Mayor, yeah.
Miho.
Just to clarify, if we can ensure that emergency motion signed by myself and other members of the area committee will be taken, even without debate?
Well, as I said, we go through the business of the agenda. So yes, it's my intention that we will get to the emergency motion also. So next on the list that's indicated, councillor Darren Moriarty.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Look, I don't want to go back over a lot of the points we discussed as a topical motion at a previous city council. I spoke in favour then of this plan. I think it's a vitally important plan. I think I really welcome Brendan's presentation to discuss and show councillors, a full council, what the plan entails. I really welcome the drawings of showing people how they get to where they need to go. I think that's really welcome development and I thank the city council for doing that. I think it's going to be really important because if we're telling people where they can't go, we have to show them where they can go. I want this to get cars off our streets that don't want to be in the city centre. If you're coming to the city centre by car, you're welcome. If you're coming through the city centre to get through it to go somewhere else, we're asking you to take an alternative route so we can clear the city of the congestion that's hampering the city at the moment. I think the figure was sixty percent of people get into town using public transport. They're stuck in rammed traffic. In my own area of Inchicore, on Alclanainam, they're stuck on the keys, they can't get into town where they're trying to go to because of private cars. If we can get those private cars around the city instead of through the city, it'll be to everyone's benefit and enhance the city centre. I really welcome the initiative to roll out a public engagement campaign to show people how to get around the city instead of coming through it and up the keys. And yeah, I just think we could have played a drinking game on how many times Brendan said, as you requested through the city development plan. This is our plan. These are our objectives.
Gormaghat, councillor Katchenstock.
Thank you very much. So here's the thing, I want to support this plan. I unequivocally support the measures in this plan. I want it to go ahead. So it's with a great deal of reluctance that I am speaking in favour of councillor O'Farrell's motion, but the reality is that we have not met our UN CRPD obligations to DPOs here. And DPOs, as councillor O'Farrell has said, are a specific group of people. They're not the likes of the Disability Federation of Ireland or the Irish Wheelchair Association or whatever. We've, I think, six or eight of them registered with DCC at the moment. I would appreciate if the manager were able to name exactly who those are perhaps. And the kind of consultation you need to do with DPOs under this is close work. It's one-on-one or it's small group, it's going back and forth with them. It is not inviting them to make a submission, unfortunately. Myself, councillor O'Farrell, councillor Heaney and councillor Mina engaged in a process over the last two years with the DCC staff and DPOs around how this consultation would work. And in fact, there is an extensive plan which you yourself, as Lord Mayor, launched in December in relation to it. in December in relation to it, on how we would engage in that kind of consultation. And I would ask if that has been followed in terms of that engagement. So I really want this plan to go ahead and I don't want there to be any doubt about what I'm saying there, but we cannot cherry pick when and how we can do this kind of consultation. And the reality is that the consultation that is legally required by the UNCRPD has not happened here.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Daniel Kayton.
I just want to briefly reiterate some observations I've had on the plan. Firstly, that it should be about, it's about people who use the city centre as a destination, but it's also about people who live there and it's about making that city centre a better place to live and a healthier place to live. So reducing traffic congestion is a massive priority for me and that's why I am also, like councillor Stocker, disappointed to hear the perspective of the DPOs that they haven't been properly consulted with. And I do appreciate, Brendan, that you have been engaging with people like the Pier Square residents and there's a number of others. I know I brought your attention about St Mark's Church and there's a big concern for their community who access that as a city centre location, that they're not very clear on how they can continue to access that following the implementation of the plan. So I suppose a much clearer visualisation, and I know we've seen some of that so far, of how people will continue to move around the city centre is very important, but I think just coming back to that, that key point about engaging with people and bringing them along with us, because I think all of us want to support, most of us want to support the merit of the plan, but there are a few factors that we need to just comply with around engagement. Thanks.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Christie Burke.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I want to second the motion from councillor Damien O'Farrell. And I'm outraged at the fact that the VVI didn't get the opportunity to have proper consultation, given the fact there's a UN policy in relation to the disability group. I got that disturbed by it this morning. I sent it on to the CEO, Mr Shakespeare, and he in turn sent it on to Brendan O'Brien. Where I take the point about that certain sections of the city will be carefree, are you going to send them then down through Portland Row and East Wall into the constituency of the North and Assurie? At the end of the day, Lord Mayor, blue badge drivers, why there's no legislation or legalities to allow them driving to the likes of Bachelor's Walk? What happens if a person who's visually impaired gets an apartment in Bachelor's Walk and the blue badge driver has to drop them somewhere beyond? And, you know, we're all crying out for a safe city. It is our plan, it is part of the development plan, but with proper consultation. And until that happens, I feel that the manager has actually ignored and not taken into account the issues and the difficulties that people with disabilities have. And remember, manager, we have a responsibility, we have a huge responsibility to these groups under the UN policy. So I certainly would be voting against it until I see an improvement with consultation. Manick Slinn is right, it probably will end up in court.
Yeah, thanks, Karahal. Not going to reiterate what has been said already. I'm supportive of the overall plan. This DPO, this tension between active travel slash public transport projects and DPOs and disability groupings just seems to be something that is there on an ongoing basis. It's not just this initiative, it's happened before. And I just would, you know, it's a real pity. We'd really want to try and nail this for once and for all so that we have those groups on board. Can I ask Brendan, Brendan, in terms of the eastbound bus gate on Bachelor's Walk, can you just tell me exactly where, just where will the traffic that will be diverted leave the North Keys? What road are they going to use? And just as an observation, Karahal, the, you know, as a huge supporter of active travel, the growth in cycling and pedestrian numbers is a little bit disappointing from what I could see. In that vein, can I ask Brendan, can you just circulate your slides? They're different to the report that we got and I'd like to have a look at those slides. Thank you.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Neil Ring, Niall Ring, Gomala Shkal.
Gurbil Mihalagat, Karahal. Just a couple of points. One, the flawed process, which I have pointed out before and councillor O'Farrell has articulated the flawed process in relation to the disability sector. There's also the flawed process in relation to the elders, as you rightly worded, you said, councillor Heaney. Because, and I've asked the manager the question and he keeps coming back with vague answers, but it's in black and white. It was published on this council citizen space platform, internet exclusion, excluded people. I'm interested to hear that he's been speaking to the people in Pier Square. What about the people in Stony Batter? What about the people in East Wall? When Westland Row, you can't turn left onto Pier Street, all the cars will flood into East Wall. When Diageo can't get their AD trucks into Dublin Port via the Keys, they will go up through Stony Batter, down the North Circle Road, causing even more chaos on the road that's already chaotic. Nobody willingly gets into a car to go either through, across or into the city. It's something that people have to do and they just have to do it. No economic impact, no climate change impact. If you're in a car for an hour instead of half an hour, there's an impact on the climate. And as for the woman going to the Rotunda, the child will be in school by the time she gets to the Rotunda with this plan. Thank you very much.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Deirdre Conroy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I appreciate some information about this, about having safe driving in the city. There is already very slow driving in it because of the traffic. And the problem is this European capital city doesn't have an underground system, whereas every other place has for the last 120 years. So that is something that the NTA has to get done for Dublin City Council. Also, as I've said about being the chairperson of the public transport, I really need to get the school bus system for the schools, for the children in schools, because that will reduce the amount of cars driving in and around the city. And that's to be on the south of the city, because apparently it's already on the north of the city to have the school bus systems. Also, that people are ending having to drive because they might be walking and cycling, but because of the last months of storm winds and rain, that's very hard for them. So we need to have a system, not just to drop all of the cars out of the city, but to have a better bus system like the Lewis to be redone, because so many buses, unfortunately, there aren't enough drivers and many of the buses have pieces saying, sorry, not in service. That's a lot I know out in this area of the south. So if we could get the system really done in the capital city for the NTA to do it for Dublin City, that is absolutely necessary.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor.
Okay, thanks very much, Lord Mayor. So councillor Moriarty, yes, as I alluded to in the presentation, we will be providing those drawings to show how people get to. The various different points that people have raised, such as hospitals and so on. And in fact, most of the routes are practically unchanged. You know, it has to be repeated again. We're talking about a very small section that we're making changes to, just some traffic management changes to. With reference to councillor Stocker, yes, all the DPOs that we have in file were actually notified on a number of occasions of the plan. And both, sorry, both ourselves and the NTA had reached out to them and asked them for their submissions. We're still several months away from any implementation of what are basically turn bans, so are no straight ahead movements. They're not big projects such as building College Green or something like that. So it is our intention to reach out to them, but the specific item that was raised is about blue badge holders.
Sorry, just on a, it's difficult to live, there's so much misinformation coming out there. With respect.
No, that's not a point of information, Damien.
No, it is, with respect.
Gomala Shkal, no, it's not.
But just because somebody says something doesn't make it fact.
That's not missing.
That's not factual.
Questions have been raised and the manager's given an answer.
You can't come along and just say things.
A point of information. Please, we've one chair here in the council. Nobody can be shouting and everybody can't be shouting at the same time. I've made a ruling. That's not a point of information.
The manager is not taking any regard to what these councillors have said.
So if we can take it up, we're in the process of a debate. That's not a point of information.
But the manager can't be sitting there and saying things.
That's not a point of information and I've made a ruling.
You just can't do that.
Gurbil Mihalagat.
You can't be sitting there in that chair saying things that are not true. I'm sorry, manager.
We can't hear Catherine, Lord Mayor.
Sorry. Have you read the document that was released on DCC consultation with DPOs in December on what that consultation should entail?
Yes, I have read it, yeah.
I mean, there needs to be mention in the final report of each DPO's specific points were considered and waited. That needs to be in the final report. It's not here. It's not in the report.
Manager, can you continue? Damien. Councillor O'Farrell, please. No, councillor O'Farrell, please. We're in the process of a debate and we. He's misleading the chambers, is what he's doing.
It's very unfair now. It's very unfair, manager. Has respect for the councillors. I'm an elected member and I'm representing people.
So is everybody else in this chamber. And there has to be respect. And there's more people that want to have a debate here.
And there has to be respect for the people, there has to be respect from the management of the people that we represent.
And there's a debate underway and with respect, there's 62 other councillors that are taking part in this debate and they get a chance to question the manager and have their questions answered. So with respect, let the manager continue and debate will go on.
Hear, hear, Lord Mayor.
So in relation to councillor Daniel Kayton, yes, as I said, we have been engaged with Pier Square residents. We're aware of the issue with the church there and we have started to reach out to them as well. And I suppose we should point out that, you know, we received quite a lot of submissions. Some of them had specific questions in them. Once we're through this.
Sorry, can I, on a point of information, on a point of information, on a point of information, on a point of information. What does reach out mean as regards the DPO? What does reach out mean? Did you sit in a room with them and have a continuous?
Okay, no, you've asked a point of information, now you're not making comments.
What does reach out mean? Can I ask?
You've just asked that. So please, no more comments.
So councillor Burke, you asked.
Sorry, I'm entitled to ask and I'm entitled to.
Damien, so here's the thing. Here's what's going to happen. I'm going to ask you now to refrain and please let the manager continue with the debate. There's still a long list of people that want to come in. They want to talk through the issues and please let them do it.
Sorry, councillor Burke, you asked about Portland Row and, sorry, I've just lost my place there.
East Wall.
Sorry, East Wall. I'm not clear why you think there would be more vehicles there, but also bear in mind what it was that you asked us to do as a council. You asked us to reduce the number of cars in the city by 40%. What you didn't ask us to do was to reroute those same cars, you know, on a different road. So what we're trying to do, we're trying to implement what you've asked us to do. We're trying to implement that. So what we're not saying is that every single vehicle that uses the North Keys or uses the South Keys will divert onto the nearest available street. The intention of this is really to start to change people's view of the city centre and that's a process that will take a period of time. So, you know, that is what we've set out. Councillor Nisha or Murray, you asked about the various different bus gates and particularly the eastbound. So again, you know, the Bachelor's Walk section is quite small. People can go all the way up to Jervis Street. They can use Church Street. They can go to Jervis Street. They can transfer over to the south side. There's various different routings around that area. And again, part of the engagement that we do, and bear in mind, we're still four months away from any implementation, there's still a long period of time for us to engage with people regarding any issues that arise. And what we're saying as well is that during the process of submissions, we got quite a lot of people who raised different issues with us. We now intend to go back and actually address some of those. Some of those were not real issues. The actual change is actually quite small geographical area. Councillor Ring, again, you know, we did put the consultation up on the Citizen Hope, which is what we're required to do. We also put it up in our offices. We also put it up in the NTA's offices. We did receive letters. We did receive emails. We did receive handwritten submissions which were made at the civic offices. So there was that engagement where people could do that, could come in, could look at all the information. They didn't have to do it online. Everything was actually printed off and left both in our offices and in the NTA's offices. Again, the issue, I suppose, that was raised about, you know, Diageo, for example, where we're engaging with Diageo. We've had about three meetings with Diageo at the moment to see what can be done. They have a certain number of trucks going up and down to the port. There's obviously different routings such as around the M50. So there's an ongoing engagement and in fact, we met them again today. And that's what we mean by reaching out. We've met with anybody who's actually looked to meet us.
Have you been in Church Street, manager? To see the congestion.
So councillor Conroy asked about school bus system. So again, that's an issue with the NTA and that's been raised a number of times with them through the Public Transport Subcommittee.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Cato Driscoll.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very supportive of any change we can do to improve the air quality in our city. We know that air quality has a huge impact on people with the likes of Asman COPD. The Irish Heart Foundation says that if we were to meet the WHO guidelines for air quality, we would save 500 lives a year in the city. But I'm also really conscious of the challenges that refitting a city that has been taken over by cars have. And there's definitely elements of people feeling safer in their car, particularly people bringing around the smaller Dubliners, our babies and toddlers. People don't necessarily always feel that public transport is accessible or safe for them and that's a mind shift that we need to do. So as well as making these small traffic changes, there's quite a lot of other work we need to do to make sure the city feels safe and clean enough for people to move around in different ways. My question for the manager is about waste collection. We know that this is a big challenge and I'm just wondering, are the waste collection companies part, one of the groups that you're engaging with about how they'll manage their moving around the new traffic arrangements? Thank you, Chair.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Dermot Lacey.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks Brendan for the presentation, which I found really informative. And first thing I want to ask you, could you circulate those slides? Because one of the problems I have with this, and I want to support it by the way, is that this has been referred to as a Dublin City Council plan and yet this is the first time I've had a presentation on it. It's the first time I've seen it in full. So when you're talking about having a workshop with the other people, can you have a workshop for councillors? Because I'd like to understand the plan and be able to present it. And to be honest with you, I think this plan demonstrates a failure of the SBC system because this is all processed through the SBC. And those of us who weren't on the traffic SBC weren't involved. And I just think that's something that we need to look at. I'm delighted with the Custons House key proposal, something I proposed in 2008 and the traffic officials said it was impossible to do. So I'm delighted you've caught up with me. Just on the DPO issue, can you, you know, clarify, is this plan subject to now legal challenge, in your opinion, because of where we're at and the difference of opinion in relation to whether or not they were consulted or not? Because it's a bit pointless to launch it if the plan is going to be subject to legal challenge. And the final point, it really bugs me when we keep on talking about the NTA, because the NTA seems to impose on the city whatever it wants and it does nothing that we ever asked them to do. So I have a real problem with that.
Gurbil Mihalagat, councillor Lacey, councillor Deirdre Heaney.
Gurbil Mihalagat, Karahal, and I just want to pick up on what the previous speaker said, and that is the NTA, and to pick up on what Hazel De Nortoon mentioned and to ask the manager in relation to communicating with residents in Arteine. Two bus stops are being removed, one from Daniele Road and one from Colester Avenue on the Malahide Road to facilitate the NTA's Clon Griffin to city centre Corbus corridor, which I support. However, they're not listening. Again, it's our elders. There are elders who are using those two bus stops and they're replacing those two bus stops with one bus stop on a very narrow footpath with no shelter, again, for vulnerable pedestrians and vulnerable commuters. And the response from the NTA at a meeting I had with an official from the NTA was that it's only a few minutes' walk from the bus stops that we're removing to the new bus stop. You know, they're not thinking about the realities, manager. And Karahal, I would appreciate, Lord Mayor, I would appreciate if our manager could please engage with the NTA. could please engage with the NTA, ask them to listen to these people, five of whom on lower Artain cottages have now initiated a digital review because they're not being listened to. Gervadis Margot, our fair.
Gervadis Margot. Manager.
So councillor Driscoll asked about waste collection. So again, you know, as I say, most of the waste collection in the city can still move along the streets that they move along at the moment. So we will be engaging with them on any specific issues that arise, just in the small section of Bachelors Walk and the small section of Aston Key. But bear in mind, we will be allowing access into those areas. We'll be changing some of the routings in the areas, so in general, they shouldn't have an issue getting in through these areas. The councillor Lacey, yes, like Custom House Key, I suppose, you know, you're quite right, like you raised it in 2018, but if you look at the figures in 2018, we had a lot more traffic. We're hopeful that if we implement these measures, that we'll start to see that reduction, which will allow us to seriously contemplate doing something outside the Customs House. And that would require us to unpick, you know, Beresford Place, that whole big gyratory system around Beresford Place, make the back of Beresford Place two-way, put in public transport route, put in a cycling route, so that the front of the Customs House could then be available for some other uses. So it is a bit of a longer term plan, but it's very much bedded in with the idea of reducing the traffic in the city centre. I can't answer you about the legal challenge. I suppose that is something we hope doesn't arise. We think that what has been raised with us is about the blue badge or the parking permit badge on cars, and we don't have a mechanism under current legislation to allow them to use what are either bus gates, Lewis streets, pedestrian streets. There is no derogation within the transport legislation. It's just not within our gift to actually be able to do that. That may be something that in some time the Department of Transport looks at to try and address, but at the moment, it's not there. What the blue badge or the badge allows a user to do is to park for free in a disabled parking space and to use a disabled parking space. It conflates no other benefits. However, we should point out, like anybody with a disability is entitled to free travel. They can use public transport for free. We have, in these areas, there is, taxis are allowed. So we have a fleet of wheelchair accessible taxis. We have taxis that can be used by anybody, and they're allowed into these spaces. So, you know, if there's specific difficulties in those small spaces, we will try and address them to ensure that nobody is discommoded. But the idea that the people can drive through that area to get to further out of the city, that just goes against what we're trying to do. There's a difference between, we can't cut off access to somebody's house, somebody can still get to that location, but what we're trying to do is to reduce the true traffic. Councillor Heaney, I'm aware of the digital review regarding the bus stops, and I suppose it is before the High Court, as I understand, but I'm not familiar with the details, but I'll certainly raise it again with the NTA. As you know, on Clontarf to City Centre, there was compromise in the end about the number of bus stops, and some bus stops have been reintroduced, so... No, I'm saying that on the Clontarf to City Centre route, there is some additional bus stops being introduced. I'm just saying that the discussion regarding bus stops, hopefully we'll be able to have that on Clon Griffin as well.
Brendan, can you circulate?
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. Of course, we will circulate the slides. We'll have to... The reason that they're different, I suppose, from some of the ones that would have been seen at the Transportation SBC is we've got some of the provisional, and they're still provisional, figures for the canal cordon for 2023, so we just wanted to bring the up-to-date figures. They're still slightly provisional, but they'll be out shortly, so yes, we will circulate them.
Gervadis Margot. Councillor Michael Pigeon.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the council staff and Brendan and your team for their work on this and for answering our questions. And whether you agree with Brendan's answers on everything or not, I think, to be honest, you deserve more respect than you've gotten tonight, and a bit more calmness would be appropriate. A lot of interruptions, and there's another. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I think councillors, we should all be aware, there's a power dynamic here, that staff cannot push back in as vigorous a defence of themselves as we can sometimes attack them, and we should maybe just reflect on that. Even if we don't agree with the answers, that's fair enough. You have good points to make, but perhaps we could all do it calmly. Now, on the consultation issue, I'm glad that management actively approached and asked for consultation. If you feel that more should be done, that's fair enough, but I think it's positive that I understand, Brendan, you're more than happy to do that. I would note, though, there is a general problem of people conflating consultation with having a veto, and that's something that is true, I find, across all public consultations. On the substance of the issue, I just think this is brilliant. Going back to the topic of the actual plan, I think it's exactly what Dublin needs. I don't think the keys work for anyone. They're congested, traffic barely moves, and buses get held up, and there's a basic democratic math to buses, which is that they carry 70 to 90 people in the space that you would have fewer than four people in cars on the road. And I think you should give the bus priority on our keys. They are the most accessible form of transport, bar none, in our city. They move more people than any other form, and we should help them for free.
Councillor Vincent Jackson.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks to Brendan and Deirdre for the report here tonight. Obviously, this is an emotive issue, as we've seen from the contributions earlier on. And one question that was asked earlier on, Brendan, you didn't answer about the low take-up of usage of the cycle lanes in the city for the huge investment. Maybe you could just come back on that later on, because I think they're actually, they're very poor. Maybe with all the other measures that are being proposed, they'll increase substantially. I would hope they'd increase very substantially with the amount of investment that's being made. It used to take me, just to say, and this was two years ago, 15 minutes to get home from here, takes about 40 minutes now. It used to take about 15 to 20 minutes to get from Ballyfermer into the civic centre, into the civic offices. It takes roughly an hour now. And these were all the improvements in the measures. And I have to be honest with you, you know, I'm just stuck in traffic all the time, and someone would say, well, you can get a bus into town, but usually you're going somewhere else, so reduce the capacity to do so many other things. But I know that's the way we're going in the future. I am, Lord Mayor, very worried in the longer term. I actually think we're doing huge damage to Dublin. I've been in London recently, and they're reversing a lot of decisions they've made because they've had catastrophic effects on the commercial life of some parts of the city. Notwithstanding that, I'm going to support what's here before us tonight here. The one thing I would ask before I conclude, just, the NTA to me is, and councillor Lacey said it, I've never seen such a dictatorial organisation that are destroying Ballyfermer, as you're aware, Lord Mayor, looking to take out a roundabout that's been there for 70 years, looking to put in bus connects when there's no local consultation. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Sorry, thanks, Lord Mayor. I just want to focus my questions on the whole issue around Diageo. Because the issues that have been raised during the consultation and the reports to date, if this goes ahead as currently stands, will drive significant volumes of traffic through Stony Batter, up along Church Street, which is already effectively a car park on a daily basis. Clonlift Road, East Wall Road, Severley Place, Queen Street. So, and that will be as a result of the alternative routes going down the M50. So you mentioned, Brendan, that there is a level of engagement taking place. I welcome that, but I have a number, I suppose, of specific questions. So as a result of those discussions to date, if traffic is directed, the Diageo traffic in particular is directed to the M50 or through town, what is, can you quantify, or can we quantify the number of extra journeys that we acquired through Stony Batter, through the inner city, and the increased level of emissions that will be a result of those measures? I'd like a direct answer to those questions, please.
Margot Ray. Councillor Declan Mina.
Gervadis Margot, our fair. How do I start? ADPO raised concerns about the process, but also made a submission, which we've been discussing extensively. I was part of that DPO group, I believe the manager did. My understanding, and if the manager can confirm, he did offer the DPOs a meeting. If that's the case, then I think the process has been handled. I'm visually impaired myself. I came to this meeting on a Lewis, and I'm going home on a bus. And I, you know, that's how the vast majority of visually impaired people get around. And the fact is that, you know, blue badges, fine, there's a discussion to be had there, but the vast majority of people use public transport or occasionally taxis, which are provided for. Manager, can you confirm that these are two minor changes to small parts of the road, and that if there's a catastrophic issue, it is possible to reverse them? And finally, I just want to say, I think Dublin City Council is actually, has a lot of people who are working very seriously to support disabled people. I think they're taking it seriously and doing a lot of work. The NTA, on the other hand, is a sham, and what's happening there, the dangerous thing is talking about the 90-minute fare. Non-disabled people can very easily change public transport, disabled people can't. And it is an access issue, and also save the trees on the Avon Road.
Thanks, Earl Verne. I'll be brief, to no point repeating what's been already said. Just to thank Brendan for the very informative presentation. A general comment is that I'm supportive of the measures proposed to try and limit private car use in into the city. I don't think we have any choice going forward. The only difficulty that I do have, and I've raised it consistently, is that we cannot disadvantage the disabled or the senior sits while we're doing that. There cannot be collateral damage to what we want done to the city. Two of the councillors who I have huge respect for, councillor Farrell and councillor Stocker, have expressed serious reservations as to whether we adhered to the requirements to consult with the DPOs. And because they're two serious councillors, I minded to support Damien's motion and to support the concerns that they have, unless convinced otherwise. Declan's made a couple of points to make me think, but given my respect for both those councillors and the claim that we haven't adhered to what we were legally obliged to, or certainly morally obliged to, I feel that I'm going to have to support Damien's motion. Gervadis Margot.
Gervadis. Councillor Hazel Chu.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Can you hear me? Yeah, sorry. Firstly, I just want to say a big thank you to Brendan and the team. From working with his team and seeing some of the correspondence before that they get in relation to contentious matters, it's not an easy job, and I think we all need to be a bit more polite in our discussion, as my colleague councillor Pigeon has said. I'll make it very simple. 36 months ago, we were a city that was in lockdown. Five months ago, we were a city that was burning. A month ago, we were a city that was closing down public lanes because they weren't safe. That is where our city has become, and that is where our city needs to improve from. I would like a safe, friendly city that everyone can assess. The Lord Mayor has done a great job this year trying to make sure our city is kind and full of inclusion. However, people can't access our city when they are stuck in traffic, when they are stuck into 60% true traffic and not getting into our city. So I would like to make sure that we improve from that, and that's what we as councillors want to do as well, to make sure that we have not just a green city, but a livable and visible city. I don't believe we should be debating the likes of Diageo in this chamber. It's a billion euro company that if we don't want their trucks going through Stony Batter, tell them to pay for smaller trucks, or tell them to go through the M50. Why do we have to pay for their increased emission?
Gervadis Margot, Hazel, councillor Anthony.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. I welcome the manager's report. I know it'll be inconvenient for a lot of people for some time, but I think the benefits in terms of the environment and city centre enhancement will be well worth it in the end. Regardless, or, you know, assuming that the process with the DPOs was, met all the legal obligations, I'd just urge the manager to engage with them in relation to specific implementation issues going forward. Secondly, I'd just also like to acknowledge the Dublin City Council's role in terms of banned turns and one-way streets and implementing them post-consultation. Unlike the NTA's application in relation to bus corridors from Templegra Farming into the city centre and from Kimmage, where they propose banned turns and one-ways without any consultation, and this is the first that a lot of people have seen in relation to it, and it has impact for Rat Gar Turneur, Rapp Mines and Kimmage. So I would ask the Assistant Chief Executive, what submission has been made to board Panola in relation to the consultation process that's required for these by Dublin City Council? And if you can't answer it tonight, maybe you would answer it in the coming week. We have posed this question to the Assistant Chief Executive from today's Dublin South East Area Committee also. Thank you.
Gervadis Margot. Councillor Claire Connor.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks for the presentation, Brendan, and to all the team. I've found it very informative. I do regret the new departure in the chamber tonight whereby the manager couldn't make his submission. There was nearly 4,000 public submissions, but we didn't actually get to hear the manager's submission tonight, and I, for one, am hugely disappointed by that. And I regret that that happened in the manner that it did, and I agree with councillor Pigeon's comments on it. I don't want to rehearse what's already been said. I know there's more consultation to come, and I value that. But can I hugely commend the public consultation that has happened? To think that there's a similar level of submissions from the public as there is in the development plan, I think shows how successful that consultation period was and how engaged the public are with this issue. I'm stunned that the majority of car users want this plan, but I think the facts and the statistics speak for themselves, and that's wonderful. I fully support the plan. And I think, as councillor Pigeon also said, sometimes we use consultation here or lack of as a veto, but this is one instance where we've had a debate and we haven't been able to say the public consultation has cost us the project. So well done to the management team for ensuring the public consultation process has been done. I absolutely accept the submissions made by other councillors, it's more to do with certain grievances. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Manager, you referenced that you would contact the NTA in relation to some gaps in the bus services and so forth that was raised earlier. Can you add the gap that's left with the withdrawal of the number 17 and 18 buses in Cremlin? There's a huge gap that means people in the middle of Cremlin can't get to Cremlin Village. It's affecting older people in particular. If you could raise that with the NTA. Lord Mayor, I'm coming from this, from a person who gave up driving seven years ago. That was my, me trying to do my bit to try and ease congestion in the city and so forth. So I rely on buses, and I need buses to be on time, and increasingly, I find that they're not. And one of the most frustrating things is to see buses delayed in bus lanes, either by parked vehicles or by a row of private motorists who decide to take the bus lane as a shortcut. We need to use technology to stop that from happening. A dash cam on a bus, for example, would be a good way of doing it, or cameras on our bus lanes. Because those who are illegally using the bus lanes need to be caught and fined. I get it also that families need cars, so we have to be careful in when, the type of changes that we make. But in general, I support the plan, but also, as we said earlier, Damien Farrell's motion.
Councillor Janet Horner, please.
Thanks very much. And just on the general point of the plan, I think I'm very excited to see this moving forward. I think that it's been, I've been on this council now for four and a half years or so. I think we've sorely lacked ambitious plans for the city in that time, and I think that it is great to see something that is truly ambitious in how we can transform the lives of people who live here, who are resident here, who deal with the frustrations of the traffic, the inaccessibility of the city ultimately, the lack of clean air, the noise, et cetera, all the other issues that we will come to. I would raise a few points more generally. One is around the safety issues, and I think, you know, if you look at the Dublin Enquirer recently launched the collision tracker, you can see a cluster of collisions for people cycling around Bachelors Walk. I think it shows why it's so important to have interventions there, but I would like to make sure that we are continuing to audit to ensure the safety, we are keeping on top... We are keeping on top of how the plan impacts on safety. I think quality is the other aspect that I really want to see brought to the fore with the plan, and that we really emphasise quality. With my 15 seconds remaining, I do want to raise the issue of shared mobility. We don't, I think there is an issue here where we need to be looking at how we can bring more people onto shared bikes in the city. And we are significantly below our targets for how many shared bikes, particularly e-bikes, we could have in the city at the moment. And I think this plan is an opportunity to bring that forward.
And then, just from my own point of view.
Chair, with my hand up as well.
Who's this speaking?
John Lyons.
Oh, sorry, John, your hand's not up online there. Councillor John Lyons.
It was up twice, it keeps going down. Gomme leiscau. Chair, I'm going to share my time with councillor Farrell, just briefly to say, fully in favour of the plan. I think it's hugely needed for the city. I think any plan that potentially leads to a huge reduction in car traffic in the city, an increase in the ability of public transport users to get around the city more quickly, sees a reduction in our CO2 emissions, improves air quality, reduces noise pollution, and potentially transforms our public realm, should be fully and wholeheartedly supported. And I am in favour of it. But I am very concerned about the issues that councillor Farrell has raised. And you yourself launched in December a new consultation process for DPOs, which doesn't seem to be adhered to in this particular instance. So I'd like to pass it over to councillor Farrell to say a little bit more on that. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just reading the process for Dublin City Council to consult with disabled persons, organisations, under the UN Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. These organisations have special rights to consultation on decisions which affect their lives. So the manager has referenced, I would have expected to see a report of how each DPRO, the specifics points that they raise were considered and how they were weighted. That's not in the report. The consultation with DPROs is a continuous process. It's not a one-off. They weren't offered that. And I don't know why we can't, Dublin City Council can't raise our hands up and say, yeah, we fucked up, we didn't do it. We'll use this time between now and the implementation, do it and have meaningful consultation. No, and I'm not apologising, sorry. I'm not apologising for being robust.
No.
People with disabilities, since Adam and Eve have been stood on the rights.
Damien, you have no more right than anybody else to speak more than anybody else in this chamber. And you won't shout down the chair. Right.
Chair, can I just raise a point of order, please?
Yes.
It's a genuine query in relation to the process, because what was released by yourself on December the 3rd talked about a new consultation process with disabled persons, organisations, from the pre-calc.
So what's the point of order, John?
Yeah, I'm asking, was in this instance, was this, I fully support.
So if I'm allowed to speak, maybe when I finish, we might get some clarity on it, because I'm going to avoid the opinion of the law agent.
Because it is.
Yeah, I've noted. I've heard you, John, you passed over your time, Gormoghut.
Cheers, thank you.
Right. Now I need to frame my thoughts. Let me start off by saying, in this plan, in what it's trying to achieve and what we're looking to do, I'm very, very supportive. I'm one of these people in this chamber that's come on a journey since, particularly since I was elected in 2014, and understanding the importance of what we're looking to do here. When we look at our transport figures, I love that they're absolutely exploding, particularly on the weekends, because it shows people coming into our city, enjoying our city. That's really, really important. When we look at research that says six out of every 10 cars in our city are just using it as a rat run to go through our city, and they're not actually terminating, that's something that we need to address, without a shadow of a doubt. And removing traffic that's not terminating in our city is important. However, I do think we need a common sense, pragmatic approach. And it can't be, and maybe this is highfalutin thinking, but it can't be just a one-size-fits-all approach. Like, Diageo is something that's been mentioned here an awful lot of times. And some people are saying, like, I was checking on Google Maps, it's 5.5 kilometres from Diageo to get down to the port, to send it out by the M50 and up and around its 40-odd kilometres, which the Irish Times has said results in just under 1,000 tonnes of CO2 extra in the city. Why can't we be pragmatic and say, if we can address the cars and the vehicles, okay, maybe don't use our city between the hours of 7 and 9 or half 9, and maybe don't use the city between 4 and 7 in the evenings. But if we're addressing pretty much the most of what's done, I don't see an argument for climate action and sustainability to send vehicles out in a big loop around the city creating more carbon. So can we just have a common sense approach? And it's the same, Bus Connects has been mentioned here and what's going on in Ballyfermit and things like that. And even looking at what's here there, we need to bring communities on a journey with us. People need to be included in absolutely everything we do. And we can see the debate that we're having around disabilities here, but also the wider people in Dublin. But I really, really do think, like, I can't understand why we can't just have a system that assesses on a case-by-case basis. If somebody's doing actual business in the city and the businesses in the city, why can't they move around the city? Why should we send them up around by Dorset Street and increase the traffic through Stony Batter? Or why should they be sent out on the M50? That, for me, makes no sense. So let's approach this from a common sense objective to say, if you're based on the Keys and you're in the port, okay, yeah, we'll try and facilitate you and we'll try and work with you. Because I think it's by working with people, and not a computer says no to a one-size-fits-all approach, is where we might get. To the DPO issue, I do have concerns around what's been raised here. There was a slide that said people were, I took note of it at the time, that people were informed in advance of publication. However, it's about consultation in creation and what's been launched and what's, the status quo at the moment is nothing about us, without us. So it's not about there's a plan or there's not a plan. It's, okay, this is what we're looking to do. How can this affect you? And again, guys, can we try and be more inclusive and try and include everybody, rather than shouting down everybody and everything's wrong? Let's try and work together to get the best approach. Nothing's ever going to be 100% perfect, but I think if we're all pulling in the right direction. We talk about a consultation with 3,100 people or under 4,000 people, but also listening to people in this room, the 63 councillors that represent the population of Dublin as well and have a voice. So as I said, I'm really, really supportive of this. In the main aims of what it's trying to achieve, I do. Let's see, can we iron out some kinks? And by doing it, can we deal with people? Can we come up with realistic solutions that in the main get us where we want to go? That's inclusive of all the communities that we're trying to help and to address. I might ask the law agent to come in on the DPO piece, which has been the source of which the debate this evening.
Just in a point of order, Lord Mayor, may I?
If it's a point of information, man, it's not negative.
Just in relation to councillor Pigeon.
That's not a point of information.
I don't believe anybody attacked, I don't believe anybody attacked staff.
A point of information relates to standing orders. What standing order are you looking to bring?
I'm asking that a statement by councillor Pigeon that we attacked, or that people attacked the staff be withdrawn. We didn't. It was a robust challenge. No one attacked anybody here.
Councillor Pigeon said what he says, and I think there was another instance two meetings ago where other things weren't withdrawn.
Said it at this meeting.
So do you know what? That's not a point of information. So Gormoghut.
Lord Mayor, give us respect here.
I would invite you to come into the debate.
So, Lord Mayor, I have a point of information. Just, you'll be giving me an opportunity to close off my motion.
You have one minute now, you explain that to me.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So what's the point of information?
No, the bit that I'll be closing off will all be the legal stuff. And maybe the law agent should maybe speak after I speak about the legal stuff. I don't know.
Well, I've asked the law agent to come in. If I feel there's another incident, I might ask the law agent to come back in. Law agent.
Lord Mayor, members, the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities was signed into law in 2007 by the Irish Government, and it was ratified in 2018. Now, the specific provision that we're talking about here is Article 4.3 of the UN Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability, which sets out that in the development and implementation of legislation and policies to implement the present convention, that's the convention itself, and in other decision-making processes, such as the decision here, concerning issues relating to persons with disabilities, state policy parties shall closely with and actively involve persons with disability, including children with disability, through their representative organisations. Now, that's what we're talking about here. And there's no prescribed format. The obligation here is to engage with those DPO organisations on how they wish to have their consultation. And I understand that DCC and many of the elected members here have been engaging with DPOs, and it's been an ongoing process, and it is an ongoing process. And DPO, and I heard it mentioned here tonight, and I just consulted with Eileen here, that a process was reached in December of this year. Now, the current consultation took place in September, which was prior to when that process in December was concluded. So the DPO negotiations and the DPO consultation process is ongoing, and Brendan has confirmed that it continues to be ongoing. So just to confirm that it's not prescribed to the process, and it is an initial process. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Gormoghut. Manager.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So just going back through some of the queries that were raised, just starting with yourself, if I may. You mentioned the issue of Diageo and the issue of, you know, routing their vehicles to the M50 or routing them through the various different city streets. So we are engaged in a pragmatic discussion with Diageo. They are going to move some of their vehicles over a period of time to their new facilities. There are issues with James's Gate in terms of noise at night time and restrictions on movements, et cetera, et cetera. But what we're trying to do is work with them to come up with a reasonable kind of compromise. There's about 80 truck movements there and back, so 40 there, 40 back to the port. It's not a huge number. What it does represent, actually, is about 90% of the five-axle vehicles that move along the Keys at the moment. About 90%, right? So if you like, when we introduced the Port Tunnel and the HGV ban, we reduced it from 1,700 a day, what's now down to roughly speaking about 90, right? On both sides of the Keys, you know. So it's been hugely successful in that sense. And as we're trying to prioritise public transport and make the space for pedestrians and cyclists, we can't, you know, leave a general traffic lane there. But what we're looking at, is it possible for us, and we're going to engage with the port as well on this issue, you know, is it possible that some accommodation in the port for some of the vehicles can be taken down there at night time? Is there other items that we can do? So we've met with Diageo, I think in this stage, three times. We've been up to actually look at their operation in James's Gate. We met them as early, or as latest, as this morning at 12 o'clock. And we left with a whole stack of figures about their truck movements, about what they want to achieve. And they're very much in favour of the plan. But what we're trying to do is we're not trying to, as the Lord Mayor suggests, take a very dictatorial attitude. We'd like to try and find a solution that's some given our part, some given their part, so that we're not, you know, Diageo at the moment also travel to Belfast. They use Dorset Street, they use the M50 to go to Belfast for the canning operation. So about, I think it's roughly a third of their trucks are doing that, the rest of them are going to the port. So it's not an absolutely huge number. I mean, if you think about the fact that on the Keys, the North Keys, there's probably about, off the top of my head, 80 buses an hour. You know, the fact that there might be four trucks, you know, it's not huge. We just have to see, is there some sort of mechanism to do it while still keeping the main elements of the proposal? So we are trying to do that. We are trying to ensure that, you know, Diageo is a really important place. That's why we spent, you know, several hours up there just looking at their operations. So we're very conscious of it. That's the, I don't have off the top of my head, councillor, the emissions, but they've done some exercises for us on those. So we're going to start to look at that. I suppose just going back on some of the questions raised, hopefully I've got them all. Councillor Jackson, you asked about the low take-up on cycle lanes. So I suppose what we are is, we'd reached a peak in 2019. Covid interrupted everything, and we're steadily building back up. I mean, if you go back a few years to 2014, 2015, we're probably at those kind of numbers. It's not where we'd want to be. But the rollout of safe, protected cycling infrastructure is crucial. I think people are very conscious of, you know, being safe when they cycle now. And we're seeing, like, you know, there's different changes in demographics and so on. So, for example, we've got better cycling figures than we ever had at the weekend. So clearly, there's a kind of a leisure kind of aspect to it. We expect as projects like Cluntarth to city centre open, that we will start to see those numbers rise. And if we can put in place some of the measures that we're talking about here, it'll facilitate that active travel network starting to grow. I suppose the aspects there, sorry, councillor McAdam, we've covered the points there on Diageo. Councillor Mina, you know, we had said in the consultation report, we had a section about disabled users and groups and their submissions. And we had responded, you know, that we'd either be comments raised would be taken into account. We'd also taken into account that any of the details that have been raised, we've considered for each individual measure. And what we'd said during the presentation is that when we get into the kind of public realm proposals, there's a whole stack of consultation to be done on all of those, which would be done under probably the Part Eight or, as I say, Part 10 application to the board. So there's multiple opportunities for people to engage and to discuss the items with us. The issue that was raised then, councillor Mina, the changes are minor. They're minor to two sections of roads, so on the North and South Keys. They can be undone because what they are is their signage changes. So in other words, what they'll be is that no straight ahead except buses or a bus lane put in place. You know, they're not, they're not big infrastructure changes. They're basically governed by signage regulations, they're not governed by anything else. And of course, if they don't work, they can be reinstated. So to be clear on that. The issues raised, councillor Feeney had raised the issue of the South East Area. And, you know, I suppose a lot of what's been raised, again, is to do crossover with Bus Connects and the process that's ongoing, which is with Board Panola. And I suppose some of the issues that are coming out there is in relation to some of the turn bans that are proposed, and whether it's a DCC function to put them in or not. The answer to that, I suppose, is Board Panola decides on the basis of what's submitted to them. So if they grant permission based on the drawings that are submitted, and the drawings have these turn bans, then they will have to be implemented. Now, our understanding is, you know, that'll be a DCC function, but it'll be something a bit like a developer who, you know, has a new access to a road. We have to implement that if it's part of the planning condition. I suppose the councillor Dunn, you'd asked about the, again, engagement with the NTA about the number 17 and 18. So we'll do that as well. And I suppose, I don't see any particular questions, but if I've missed anything, I can come back to it.
Damien, you've got one minute.
Yeah, thank you. I thought that was a very fair summing up by the law agent, and thank you for that. She mentioned that there's a process entered into by Dublin City Council, and this is really to correct an anomaly, really, that existed from 2019 when it was ratified. So Ireland ratified the UN Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities in 2018. And from that moment, Ireland is committed to be legally bound by that international treaty. The UN CRPD general comments have been cited in rulings by the Irish Supreme Court, as well as the European Court of Human Rights. So even though Ireland has been shamefully slow in incorporating the CRPD into Irish law, its obligations do have legal standing in Irish and international courts. And the CRPD is the framework, there's no other framework. The CRPD is the framework of disability proofing, which Ireland has legally committed to uphold. And we haven't done that. And the law agent mentioned Article 4.3 is all about consultation with the DPROs, and it's a continuous process, not one-time experience. It has to be explicit mention in the final report of how each DPRO, specific points were considered. And I want to apologise, I want to apologise, I want to apologise to the manager if he wasn't aware, I don't think the manager was aware of that. And I want to apologise if I was robust and you weren't aware. But I'm just putting it down. I'm just.
Gormoghut, yes, Declan.
My question was specifically, were DPOs offered a meeting? That was my specific question, because if the answer...
So the DPOs were...
Here, Moixcon.
Sorry. The DPOs were all reached out to before the consultation process started, when the consultation process started. And they were reached out to on various different occasions to actually, and asked to make a submission, which was considered.
Gormoghut, manager. Gurbur Margot, manager.
And we had specific.
Is it a point of information, I?
Point of information, Lord Mayor. Could I just ask the manager to update members, those of us who are particularly interested in the IZO issue? If he could just keep us updated in terms of the negotiations and discussions that are taking place, that would be appreciated. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Ruth, can you put the motion, please?
Can I?
Gomaleishgail, if it's a point of order, Declan.
Just to be really clear, they weren't actually offered a meeting. Is that what we're saying, or were they offered a meeting?
No, I think the manager correctly said that they were.
Yeah, what was, they were all reached out to. They were all told in advance that this report, or this draft plan, was going to go out to consultation. And they were asked, they were invited to make a submission on the plan. They were told how they could do that. They were told where the documents were, both online and in physical format. And they were reached out to on two occasions through that process. The NTA also reached out to the various different disability groupings that they have as well, which included some of the ones, including VVI. So they were reached out to both by ourselves and by the NTA. And the NTA specifically had a meeting with the Transport Users Accessibility Group on the plan, on the details of the plan.
We're not engaging in debate. If it's a point of information, I'll take points of information. Ruth.
Just a point of information, just the manager, I asked a question before. The manager said reached out. The broad consultation that we engaged in is not suitable for these DPOs. How many times do we have to, the broad consultation, it's not suitable.
Damien, and you've spoken on this more than any other person in the chamber. I'm going to put the motion.
You'll be calling me.
Just for members, Councillor Christie Burke has indicated that he's seconding the motion. So is that motion agreed, or do members want to put it to a vote? Okay.
Agreed.
Sorry, are you going to actually ask a question, or?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I'm trying to find out what's the impact of the vote?
From my understanding, this is an executive function and there will be no impact of the motion.
Can I ask a question?
PMs, apologies.
On a point of information, could we agree that the manager would consult with the DPOs in the next month and just agree to that? Specifically invite all the DPOs in our process to a meeting about this plan?
In the process of trying to, yeah. Damien, are we happy with that? I'm comfortable with that. I think that's very relevant. And I think what Councillor Mina is after proposing. Is that agreed?
Yeah, yeah. Can I speak? Yeah, I'm happy with that. They just want one proviso, one proviso. We adopt the process that you launched in January 23. That's the process. That's what we adopt, and that's how we consult with them. We can't.
But we've already adopted that process, and without getting into a debate, the law agent was very, very clear. That's the process that we operate under in DCC. That's what I ask questions on too. This was launched September before that process was.
No, because there was anomaly there. There was an anomaly there since 2018, and we filled the gap.
Colleagues, can I just ask, I've already said, is Councillor Mina's suggestion agreed? Manager, are you happy with that?
Yeah, no, we're quite happy. We'll do exactly that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Item was just for noting.
So is that report noted?
Report is noted.
Noted. Colleagues, we have 15 minutes. So we have an opportunity here. What I might ask is, if it's okay with everybody, if Items 14, 15, 16 and 17 can be, as I already indicated earlier, if we can reach out to management with email with questions and they will respond and come back, if that's okay? Okay.